All right, welcome everyone. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And I will start with any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to any amendments, Stephen?
The only thing I would say is seven and 10 are really combined, Elizabeth, tonight, because superintendent's report is the budget.
Okay.
So, I'm just, that's, they're combined. That's all I have.
I guess there was a question of whether we should discuss whether the board should take a more formal position on the spending thresholds that the legislature is considering right now. Let me just take a moment to give you an update on that.
Just want to add that somewhere.
Where do you want to put that?
Yeah, it could be part of the announcements, perhaps.
Could be city school.
Okay.
Because I don't think we need to do anything.
I'll put that on the item five then. Okay. All right, any other changes? All right, we'll move on to the Student Representative Report.
Some announcements that we have to say is that the South Burlington High School's speech and debate teams are looking for individuals to judge at the speech and debate tournament this upcoming Saturday. And if you'd like to judge, you should contact Carly Bennett or Veronica Way, and the information is provided. The FHTMS students will perform a midnight summer stream this Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM. You can contact the middle school office for tickets. PACT Pizza Night is this Thursday, January 7th, 5:30 to 7:00, in the high school cafeterias one and two. Please join for free pizza and to welcome back alumni and enjoy a performance by the South Burlington High School dance team, which I'm on.
We're definitely coming.
It's a good plug, yeah.
Yeah. Next, next to next Monday, January 18th, is Martin Luther King Jr. Day, so there's no school. But on that day, there's a service opportunity, kind of not to four-ish. There, it's the Third Annual Teen-Led MLK Day Community Event. All are invited to bring a fleece blanket to donate to the Syrian Blanket Project led by SBH students. And another SBH, Big Picture student will share his documentary, "Mind Your Home," about another SBH alumni. And they will be there to answer questions. Then there will be some small group dialogue, two community service projects, a painting, Painting a Mirror led by Simon Walter, and a card-making event led by the South Burlington High School Key Club. And it's basically a collaboration between PACT, South Burlington High School, Big Picture, the Student Diversity Alliance, the Key Club, the National Honor Society, the REC Department, and the Community Justice.
And is that open to the public?
Yes.
Great.
No, really.
Good. And just as an add-on, I didn't put this on the formal agenda, but are there any updates, Norali, on the Student Voice initiatives, recommendations?
I don't think so right now. There wasn't able to be like an announcement or like information given out to students before, so hopefully that'll get rolled out quickly this week or next week. But it's midterms next week, so hopefully we'll get information on it.
So, maybe if we can ask on behalf of the subcommittee, which is Julie and I, if, when you talk to Mr. Burke, and if there's a need for the subcommittee to get together again, just let us know.
Okay.
We'll get a date on the calendar.
Sounds good.
Good, thanks. Yes, I'm sorry. Oh, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. Hello, we're the Bloodtastic Rebels, my name's Molly.
I'm Nick.
And we're organizing this year, since their sixth year, the South Burlington ever best-ever community blood drive. It's going to be held on January 26th, and we wanted to get the word out into St. John Mianis, which is on Heinzberg Road. We have cards for you. Our goal is about 75 pints. We've been able to succeed it for a while now. I can pass these up to you if you want to look at them.
Thanks.
We really like the community that all come out. It's kind of a unique drive. It's not just, you know, you go there kind of for the sale cookies and then you leave. We have, it's a Wizard of Oz theme, so our whole team is going to be dressed up in like costumes, and we play music, and we have awesome raffle prizes from our local businesses. So, yeah, we really hope you spread the word, because we really want a great turnout, because we're putting a lot of work into it, and we want to have a success. Thank you.
And just, I think it's on here, but this is an online registration address on here?
Yes.
Correct?
It's www.rickross.org/blood. And you don't have to worry about the zip code and the date, you can just type in Bloodtastic, and then it'll direct you right to our drive, and then you can schedule appointment there. And you can also follow us on Facebook at Bloodtastic Rebels for any more updates and information about what the blood drive's going to be like.
Great, good luck, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you for listening.
Martin, do you want to speak about Act 46?
Yeah, just, just the, on Monday morning, there was a legislative breakfast, the city council, the school board, and legislators. And one of the issues that came up that we discussed a little bit was the spending threshold under Act 46. And we expressed kind of our view about that, but it wasn't a formal view of the board. And we discussed then whether we should either have consensus view to share with the ed committee or not. And I guess I'm bringing this up for discussion, whether we need to do that. The latest is they are taking lots of testimony. It's very uncertain where this is going to end up. It's certainly, nothing's going to happen before our budgets are into printers. They're looking at towards the end of January. But after the first couple of days of testimony, it doesn't appear that things are getting any closer to whether it's going to be repealed, delayed, or modified. I don't think us weighing in will make a huge difference, so I don't think we have to come up with a consensus position. But if the rest of the board wants me to take a consensus position to the folks, I'm happy to do so.
And my understanding is the general feedback has been either an outright repeal, or is it increase in the cap, or at least delaying implementation?
Outright repeal is almost certainly not going to happen.
Yeah, but the delay?
Delay, probably not as well. Increase to account for most of the anticipated health insurance increase, which would be about 0.9% increase. So, we would go from 1.69 to, see how good my math is, 2.59.
You got it.
So, that has probably the best chance, but that isn't even an absolute sure thing.
Well, based on what we got from the VSBAs yesterday, it sounds like they're already fighting that battle for us, so.
They are. I just don't know that us weighing in is necessarily.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I've essentially, as a legislator, I've said, whatever comes out of the ed committee, I'm going to probably support, because I trust that they're going to figure this out. And so, which is easy for us somewhat, since at least this year, it's not impacting us.
Right, okay. So, it sounds like consensus is we will not submit a formal opinion.
Right.
Okay. Any other announcements from other board members?
Well, maybe just highlighting that we did have a legislative breakfast on the, I'm sorry, I'm jumping on other board members. I was just not sure whether you wanted other city school collaboration, that was all.
We'll get, we can talk more about?
I will put one more plug in for the middle school plug. It's going to be awesome. The set is beautiful. The people acting in the play are fabulous.
It's not at all biased.
Apparently, you have to go just to see the set, let alone talented students.
Well, yeah.
Almost didn't fit on the stage, I don't know.
No, I, I do.
Well, then I'll say we should go see the dance team tomorrow night, too.
Excellent, excellent. See, good, good, these are good.
I wasn't the only one trying to miss the agenda.
All right, we will move to Agenda Item Six, City and School Collaboration.
So, again, Martin highlighted a little bit that we had a city-school legislative breakfast, first thing Monday morning. And it was well-attended by city council, school board, and legislators, as well as some senators also in attendance, and conversations around Act 46, other pending issues that may be affecting the city were also discussed. And again, conversations around communication and collaborating together was, was an important part of the meeting. So, I thought it was good, and I think at some point, we will need to continue to figure out how we want to continue to track some of the activity that Martin's just highlighted and others around the, throughout the year. I think we did pretty well last year, but once the session gets going, it's often hard to know, you know, where we should be and how we can best support our local legislators.
Do you want to give an update on specific to marijuana legislation, since that was discussed?
Yep. And so, we had the forum back in November, actually it wasn't a forum, it was a community meeting. And we gave some updates on, again, just soliciting feedback from Colorado mostly, facilitated by Kevin Dorn to both the city council and the school board, and a steering committee approach meeting. I think there's an overwhelming desire, or there is a desire, to hear differing opinions, perhaps. Kevin Dorn has at least left me a message asking about whether or not one of our upcoming budget meetings could have budget information and then a forum kind of arena. I have not responded back to him. I feel like that would be problematic in that we just, number one, we're pressed for time, and I'm not so sure, you know, that those are combinable type of situations without getting into a lot of detail, but we can talk more about that. Definitely know that there was an interest to hear a little bit more about kind of the other side, other information. So, we haven't really concluded that at this point, or any meeting time.
Maybe in part, we should see where the Vermont School Board Association comes up. Next week, they're considering this issue. I think early, what I've heard is they're probably just not going to take a position on the legalization. And if that is the case, we may decide that we in fact do want to take a position. But also, we should keep track of how quickly that is moving in the legislature, because the sense is that it's in fact not going to happen this session.
And how best do we track that, would you say, Martin?
I'll keep on top of that. I'll keep on top of that.
I mean, I know VSBAs, as you said, but if they're not going to be doing much, superintendent's association, I'm, you know, part of those things, if there's dialogue that's going on that we should be paying attention to, sometimes we find out after the fact. So, if you know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll report out on next meeting.
Thanks. All right, you want to move on to the superintendent's report?
So, the superintendent's report is all going to be covered in 10.
All right.
So, I will let you kind of move that one down or cross that one off, whichever you wish.
All right, we'll hold on that one then, and we'll move on to master planning and visioning.
So, Whitenburg continues to be employed by the district to look at kind of the financial modeling of options under, that were identified under master planning and visioning. We've had several meetings with them. We are currently looking at having a public meeting sometime probably after the passage, or the March timeframe. They are working diligently along with the business office and our office to try to come up with those financial, that financial information. I would say at this point, you know, it's moving along. It's a little bit overwhelming with numbers, but nonetheless, it's moving along, and the board's had an opportunity to, again, have a few updates along the way here, along either with our weekly planning meetings or executive session meetings. So, I don't know quite what else. We certainly know that the public has, remains interested. We want them to remain interested in dialing into understanding more about where master planning and visioning and the options that are out there rest.
Any board questions or comments? We'll turn to the public. Any questions or comments from the public? Yes.
We talked about having a meeting in March. Is the goal of that meeting just to review what Whitenburg come back with, or are there going to be other, will there be other information provided to the public? Are you, in the meantime, are you guys looking at studies on other school consolidation projects, or just kind of extend what the scope of that?
It's probably open at this point. That's the first date that we're talking about to have at least initial community feedback. So, it could be more open-ended than the Whitenburg scenarios, but it will be at least those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Item Nine, Solar Array.
So, let me, I'll introduce this a little bit again, and then John Stewart can perhaps give a little bit of a quicker, a little quick overview around what that is, or what some of the specifics are. Solar Array is in a partnership program with the city. The city on city-owned landfill off of Patchen Road would construct a solar array, and we would be partnered with them to participate in a percentage of the credits that would be generated. And that, those credits would then transfer into savings for the school over a period of time, and that period of time is 20-plus years. Again, there's been some questions around, you know, how those continue to be transferred, and some of the risks associated, and we've had those conversations with the city. And again, we're happy to be partnering with the city. We do a lot of different things. This happens to be one on electricity. There are still some questions, I think, that are out there, but we're certainly wanting to help the board make an informed decision. John, can you just maybe highlight a little bit of the, some of the specifics and where we are?
Sure. We have, well, the city has two, their wastewater treatment plant is, would be their big electric user. And so, those are the first priority of the credits. But our district, we have seven, I'd say, major meters. Two being, of course, the biggest are the high school and the middle school, and the others are three elementary schools, Dorset's, the 400 Dorset Street building, and transportation. And we're trying to figure out what would be the best meters to assign to this contract, so that we don't tie up, tie them up against future benefits, other solar contracts that may come around. So, that's where we're back and forth with the city. And we assuredly want to have this done on next, at the next meeting, at the special board meeting for the budget on January 13th, so.
Question. Do you not have the flexibility to guide those credits to any meter you want?
No, there's some, there's some specificity there. And once it's, once a meter is committed, it can't be used for any other kind of array. So, and it's 25 years. So, with technology changing and energy efficiency reducing our bills, it's something you just can't, you have to get your hand around, or head around it, just a little bit more.
And as far as the modeling goes, John, can you kind of refresh our knowledge and for the public who's here?
Sure.
Just what the annual savings would be anticipated at?
Well, for the school department, for the school, it would be about $53,000 a year for the first 10 years. After that, the out years, 15 years, it's about eight, $7,800 a year. So, that's where the, that's where the concern about going out beyond the 10 years comes into play. Susan?
Would you necessarily be taking into consideration even putting them in any of the elementary schools when that hasn't been decided yet?
No, that's, that's a, that's a point, yes.
Well, typically, you know, on the, on the school side, I mean, we are not land, you know, we're not land-rich. We don't have an awful lot of property, particularly this campus, we're not. And so, we've been approached in the past, many past years, and to this, some of the board members know, where they've wanted to put up, you know, either solar trackers or things of that nature. But because we don't have the land, it's not been an option. And, or we don't want to compromise the land, I should say. As far as other construct, I mean, currently, that's not of great interest to be putting them on top of, you know, our current facilities.
As far as the meter goes, like assigning a meter, like yours, trying to decide two meters?
Well, basically, there's a, there's a certain amount of usage that's needed. And so, each building draws on the meter, one more than another. So, we're trying to provide them with the right meters that give them, give us, or put us the number, right number of credits. We don't, we don't overdo that either. So, in some cases, we don't want to tie up a meter for a long period of time and deny that flexibility into the future.
Could I ask you that question, I think, a different way? You can't move a meter out, but if a meter becomes out of service, that's, the contract allows for that, or does not allow for that?
I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
Ilana is actually here.
I think we answered, I think we asked.
I thought we did, too, that's why.
We do, we do have Ilana Blanchard from the city who just came in. And if, and Ilana, we're not going to take action tonight. I emailed you, but, but we have in this discussion, if you could help us on that.
Do you, do I need to speak into a microphone?
No.
All right. So, so the contract allows for meters to be moved in and out, but you would need to pledge to take the remainder of the credits. So, it doesn't matter to either the city or to Altus or the contract whether, which meters are in the mix. What's important is that the remainder of the credits are used.
When you say the remainder, you know what you really mean?
So, if one does have a service.
Those, the credits that, because the meter came off, you have to still say that those credits need to be accounted for.
They would have to be absorbed.
Right.
And, yeah.
Into another meter.
Into a meter. They can only be absorbed by a meter.
Right.
So.
I guess, just a follow-up. I mean, what would happen if all of a sudden, the city's meters were absorbing all the credits? I understand that we wouldn't be able to take one of our meters out, but what if a meter subsequently was out of service? I mean, we'd still have to come back and cover the credits, even if in reality, the city is using all the credits?
You would only pay for the credits that you're taking, that you're absorbing. So, if the city has absorbed all the credits, then you wouldn't be paying for any credits, because we would be paying for all the credits.
Though our meter would be tied up, and we wouldn't be able to use that meter if some other opportunity came up for, you know, another array somewhere. Is that correct?
If it seemed likely that that was the way, I don't, I think if it seemed likely that it was, there was not going to be an ability, there wouldn't be enough generation that credits would be absorbed by that meter, then I don't see why we would object to them being taken off.
Right.
Well, my question was if you assigned it to one or two of the elementary schools, and then those are done away with, because we haven't decided what's happening yet.
Well, we'd have to assign it somewhere else.
It can be moved, or assigned to a different?
Right, so as long as all of the.
I think that's where we're trying to make, ensure that we have some flexibility, like the high school is a big user, that we have that flexibility to reassign.
As long as it can be reassigned.
But we, but we don't want to be in a situation where, I'm going to exaggerate, we only have one credit that came offline, and we have to use the high school meter, which has a whole lot of capacity. We won't, we don't want to tie up that meter for one credit when it has a whole lot more potential. I think that's a board concern, and that really needs to be.
And, right, and so the contract allows you to move the meters, to change your meters within the contract.
So, is there a capital expense to this?
No.
On the city part, not to us, but?
To the city?
No.
Not to the city?
No. There's no, we aren't, we don't own the array, we're not maintaining the array. It's owned by a third entity.
What I mean is the city land.
And only if you don't go the terms of the contract, 25 years, there's, there is an expense if you.
So, the payments go down after 10 years, you said?
Yes.
Like more than half, you said 53 to?
Eight.
Eight, okay. So, you really get a huge benefit for the first 10 years, and then it drops down. So, they get to sell that power after that 10 years, and they, that's where they make their money back, probably?
The, the difference in, between the first 10 years and the later 10 years is that the state legislative, the regulations are the, I'm sorry, the laws regulating this from the state provide for what's called the solar adder. So, they, they ensure that there's an additional credit for the first 10 years, so after 10 years, that credit goes away. So, we receive that solar adder credit for the first 10 years. So, we're paying for the combination of a residential, the cost per kilowatt, or for residential rate, plus the solar adder. But then after 10 years, we no longer receive the solar adder, just the residential rate as a credit.
So, on this particular issue, the board did have a couple contractual questions that we hope that administration can clarify fairly quickly. I think, I know, John, you were talking about clarifying them as early as tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Friday, that's right.
So, we, we did not plan, or we're not taking action tonight on this, but expect those contractualists to clarify.
So, we'll need to make sure we put it on the, under our 13th agenda.
Question, is there a fact sheet on, somewhere online, that can be reviewed by the public about all the details and the price per kilowatt hour, and the kilowatts, and design?
Ilana?
Well, I believe you have backup from.
We had, this is a year and a half or even more in process, so we had a lot of frequently asked questions and that kind of thing. We have, we haven't updated them quite yet. But the information's there, and we will make sure that that gets there.
Is there something comparable, Ilana, on the city side?
Yeah, we have backup material, we have the agenda backup, so when it went before the council, I'm trying to remember if it was November or December, there was an MO related to this. And then I believe you provided one to the.
Right, and Justin, Justin Rabdo was here in December, and we have that backup, too, at our meeting here. That's right.
All right. Anything else on solar array? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 10, the budget.
10, so budget, this is.
Move around.
Yeah, we're going to, so, yeah, it would be good, we'll walk through, so the audience can see, too. But for the board, what's in your packet actually is, is more detailed than what we have that we're going to share with you. So, I just want to be clear about that. We're going to walk through this presentation, some of it's very repetitive to what you've seen, with the exception of the FTE kind of summary sheet. And then we'll spend some time talking about, specific to the bond and to the capital reserve fund proposal. So, I just want to be clear with you that what we're going to go over is in your packet, but it's actually shortened it up and put pictures in there and things of that nature, okay? So, I don't know, people. So, first and foremost, we have things that continue, that are continuing to change. Martin alluded to this, and possibilities continue to change, although it's a little uncertain. So, I say this when we say this is getting more and more towards knowing all the details, that's not, that's not totally true. We think we're pretty close, but I just want to put that caveat in. So, this is the same thing that's again in your packet that I said, this is a following on from our initial in December 16th. And then, when we last communicated to you, last board meeting, we, again, I wanted to be really clear about the budget goals, the process, the budget worksheet, which articulates kind of the changes, staffing needs. And at your place, actually, and I sent it out this afternoon, is the longer sheet that talks about the staffing needs, and tried to provide some additional clarity to some of the categories, to specific to the, to the FTE needs, based on some feedback that I have definitely been receiving from, from some of you. The bond recommendation, which is an important component to, you know, the work that we're proposing that needs to be done, the capital reserve fund, and then, you know, a quick summary. So, we're going, we're going to try to go fairly quickly through here, stop me if you wish, along the way. John? So, again, the same thing on the goal to continue to provide students in South Burlington with optimal learning experience, and the choice to participate in a wide variety of programming. The process, again, we, as you've heard, again, we're often acronym-driven, but multi-tiered systems of support is a process that we use within the district, within our schools, and we're continuing to work to implement a plan, along with a plan that takes care of our buildings, which is called our stewardship plan. We've continued to use that as the, kind of the map for us moving forward. So, again, this information and the process that we use was using that as. So again, this information and the process that we use was using that as, as the, as again I said, the roadmap. This is that beautiful, busy worksheet that you've seen before. We are going to have this available for you after, you know, we get through these slides. John will pull this up, and we'll have this interactive, so if you do want to make some changes to the capital reserve fund, whether you do or do not want to start it, you want to see the implications of that, we'll be able to add that in. But currently, we reside at the same equalized pupils, we've not made changes to that, it's still the 20, we're a plus 2009, which is, which is here.
David, from the context would be December 16.
Yeah.
Two things that have changed are the equalized pupils in the common level appraisal.
In the CLA.
Yeah, we've got it in our heads.
Yeah, we're a little bit stuck, thank you, John. So again, that, that has made the change. We've had some changes to the equalized pupils, board I think knows that. That's started lower, and has moved up, and the CLA, conservatively, we were at 94, and that's come in at 96.27, and we have that's pretty well confirmed at this point. So looking at, you know, the total, as you look on the implications on the $366,000 home, or a condo, you can see the monthly decrease is on the right, and this is the, obviously the total decrease. So we're under the, we're under the thresholds. We'll, we'll come back to this, you know, later on here, and we'll talk a little bit more about what you'd like to do. Questions?
I have two, two things in here. One, is we talked with the legislators on Monday about the property yield estimate, and right now, the 99.55, the Joint Fiscal Office, Mark Perrow, is using a lower number, 9,870, and the Agency of Education has put all their, or any information about the budget out as 9,870. So rather than change this and have, and go through this right here, we'll change it at the end in the interactive.
Right, and that's not final either, I mean-
That's not final.
When will it be final?
When the legislature's done in May. So, but, but we need to be using, we need to use what the rest of the state's using, so-
And that is, this is what the rest of the state's currently using.
It came out last night at 8:30 in the middle of the month, so. And then the second thing is, we are still, the local revenue, there are two issues from the state, our transportation aid number is in play, because it comes from the state, and it's an absolute number, it's a little bit higher than we have in here, but it's not final. And our state special education number isn't final, so that could, it won't be a significant increase or decrease in the revenue, but that's, that's in play too, just so you know.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you point out the number the Department of Ed is using that's different? Oh, the 99?
99, you're using 9.
So we'll change that in the interactive.
And you can see what that does, but we didn't change it, it's not been final, so this is one of the hard things, I think, when we have these moving parts along the way, and they're not yet confirmed, I think the right thing to do is-
But you did, you did identify that was at risk, because that was one of the highest increases-
Correct.
-in several years, so you, I think, John, you and David had anticipated that it might come down in the legislature, so it sounds like the Department of Ed is already acknowledging it should be lower than that.
That's right.
Again, there's so many things in play on that, and conversation, I think Martin alluded to that, with a lot of, there's a lot of conversation around the threshold limits and things of that nature.
Just to ask a question about that, just to make sure I'm straight. At the extent that they decrease the property yield estimate-
Yes.
How does that impact the threshold, the growth threshold, or doesn't it really?
It does.
I mean, if they, if they decrease that, does that-
It increases the cost per pupil.
It increases the cost per pupil, it increases how much additional money, I mean, our cost per pupil might not change, it might, we might need $15,000 per pupil, but now, instead of getting 9,955 from the ed fund, or from that base grade, whatever, it's going to be the additional tax that we add on top of the dollar.
You're right, it's below the cost pre equalized pupil, that won't change, but the, yes.
But does it, does it affect the growth, the growth threshold at all? I'm just curious, I mean-
I don't think so, because that's all based on cost pre equalized pupil.
Total cost pre equalized, not, not, not just the amount of money we're getting from the state.
We'll plug the number in later and show you exactly.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
You'll see how this then relates to the, and we will do it, and you'll play around with that a little bit. Okay, thanks, John.
Sure.
So the next is related to, and this is hard for people to see, but this is, I know, I've had a fair amount of questions from the board, I've had the chance to talk with some of you about this, so again, this is another iteration for me to provide, along with my staff and administrators, to provide some additional clarity around what I'm going to call some categories, or some buckets, that were specific to the, to the FTEs. And so, I put them in categories of enrollment fluctuations, identified student needs, student curricular needs, and then operational needs for, for the sum total. And so, you know, I wanted, and I know a lot of you didn't have a chance to look at it much, I'm happy to try to walk you through this, but I think it may be better for you to just ask me some specific questions about what you see and what you notice. I certainly know that you noticed 11.44 FTE adds over the previous year budget. I know that. And so, what this tries to work out is that the difference between what we added over last, last year's approved budget was the 6.67, which you see on page two. The additions over the, over that were the 4.77, and for a sum total of 11.44. Specifically, as you look at the chart, and I'll highlight a couple things, and I've talked about the clinicians under the identified student needs, we've talked about the Howard Centered clinicians coming on to us as staff, so that, that's two right there that you see coming on to South Burlington as staff, which is part of that 11.44 add. Again, they're currently a contracted service, the argument and our contention was that we would see a better return on our investment when they were under our umbrella, because we have more control, and we're able to have direction on their schedule, and-
So it's a subjective return?
That's right.
It's not, we're not talking about, because it costs us more money.
It costs us slightly more money, I think $27,000, so that's true. I will tell you that we do think that that benefit is important to us, but nonetheless, this is, this is part of an FTE add. There's some fractional FTEs along the way, some of which we added last year to support increased enrollment, due to, at the high school particularly, as sections were added. We did some things here at the middle school to try to create a more cohesive programming with I-time, and as a result of adding I-time, we needed to add some additions to music and art. And obviously, you know of the situation that we've had with either kindergarten in the past year at Chamberlain, and this year at Rick Marcott, with fourth grade now moving to fifth next year. So let me, and we got a hand in the back from Spugby.
Just because you were just talking about the school-based clinicians, and it says the net additional cost is $27,420, does that account for the possibility that those school-based clinicians could also bring money into the district? Can they, they'll medicate?
It does not, it does not account for that, Diane, I don't know that we're 100% certain.
They cannot, because you have to be, have to be working for a mental health agency in order to build directly the Medicaid, but we could probably get some, some funding if they could, they could do, they could do like for MAPS funding, we might be able, they might be able to code for some of those things, to get some funding.
So if they're a medic, if they're enrolled as a Medicaid provider, and they're a licensed clinician, providing a mental health service, you couldn't-
Not within a school district, because we're not a, we're not a mental health agency, or a hospital, we're a school. That's the difference.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, I, you can see enrollment fluctuations, identified student needs, the curricular things, and those curricular things are in part in play, although not, not as, you know, under that particular category, you see that we're, the movement here to try to continue for program advancement, increasing opportunities for students, and accommodating a schedule. So let me, let me pause and let you come back to me with some of your questions.
One of the ones I know I've asked routinely is, one, for a longer history of FTE changes in the district, but that married up to enrollment.
Yeah.
Do we have that information available?
So I do, and I'm, I'm working on that, I've been working on that, it's, it's a little messy right now, Elizabeth, but basically, I'm, I'm not trying to be rude to you, but here is our enrollment based on years, and our FTE based in-
Can you just read the numbers?
Yeah, so, yeah, and in FY 11, we were 2,402, and again, a lot of this is wanting, I'm wanting to get confirmed, and so, let me repeat, 2011 was 2,402, these are bodies. FTE was 432.70. 2012 was 2382. And FTEs were 443.373. 2013, 2489. FTEs were 446.05. 2014 was 2369. 2015, 2,333. FTEs, 456.90. Next year, currently seated bodies, I believe, is going to be 2344. 467.11.
So, the student bodies, this is an equalized pupil, this is-
Right.
-total in chair, and in that instance, it's also counting tuition students, right? Whereas actually, the equalized pupil doesn't count tuition students, but there's the formula. But this, this counts tuition students as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
Again, I'm, this is a caveat right now, because I'm, I'm not, I'm not yet prepared to give it out to you, I'm still checking on the, you know, the data, and I want to see that. So again, when you start to look at bodies, or FTEs to students, you see that that certainly is going down. It's gone down slightly, almost every year from, you know, the start, if you do that division, it's, you know, 5.55, and it's, you know, gone down, it's gone up just a tad in this, in this last year. The unfortunate thing is to how to tie this together, because you do the direct correlation to say that this is direct student correlation, and in some cases it isn't, and in some cases it is. And part of our work, as we continue to go forward, is to look at, you know, what are the effective, you know, situations in, related to student needs, or whether it's IEP, 504 students, guidance services, health and nurse services, nurse referrals, things of those natures, what are some of the additional staffs that's needed? You know, and I don't want to stand here and say that it's, you know, it's terrible, but definitely over time, we've seen things that are affecting our total FTE count, and so-
So would it, would that get pointed out more if you broke this up? I think it would, I mean, as far as the number of teachers as well, I mean, because the number of teachers, yeah, I suppose, yeah, it's true that you could need more teachers if the cohorts are having more needs, certainly, but I think that would be more reflective, would it not, on special education, and paraeducators, and those other social services and all that, or is that, you know-
I think there's a stronger correlation to that, Martin, so student needs would more directly tie to teacher, paraeducators, but we can't be remiss about, you know, transportation, you know, there's, there's fractional needs that come into play there, whereas we need to transport students, and so, there are other pieces. I absolutely understand, and I think our previous conversation on human service, you know, our needs to be responsive to the human service needs is there, but what have we taken on, and what has been, what's, what's the, what's that demonstrate over time?
But I, I think it's really hard to justify, just looking at this trend like this, if we saw, again, that the teachers were remaining steady, which I just don't know, and we're finding these other services are what's increasing, it's telling definitely a richer story that may make more sense. Because anecdotally, you know, I hear that the needs are increasing, and the demands on us are increasing outside of your normal classroom teaching situation. And I also understand, just generally, if I'm not mistaken, that generally, our class sizes have been going up. You know, I mean, our, the class, you know, at least in the elementary school, it's hard to measure at the high school and middle school, but in tracking the class sizes, it's not, it's not been going down.
So that's, it's, again, I, there's a significant amount of data here that needs to be, continued to be proved out, and I think there's bigger questions around how we can continue to support, you know, our students. And you're right, they don't all rest in the classroom, they don't with a classroom teacher.
Well, and I think, you know, David, the brutal truth right now is, this is not defensible to the community. This is 145 students down over the current year versus the high year, so it's the last five years, and over that same time period, it's over 21 FTEs added. So it's just not, with the exception of one year, where staff went from 456.9 to 455.67, that was the only decrease in staff, and that was a fraction versus, so that was a, that's a seven-year running increase in staff, when enrollment has been fluctuating, and net, over the last five years, which is, which is the high year of 13, it's down 145.
Well, again, I, I'm providing you the data, and I'm telling you that it is, it is defensible, you know, I know you don't like the data, but I feel it is defensible based on the needs that we have, and the programs that we're trying to run to serve the students, you know, from the beginning of their experience, through their high school experience. I would like to be able to tell you that I can make it go down, but there's many, many factors that are at play, and when we, when we look to do the staffing, and some of that's done incrementally over time, and that, you know that, as we've added sections, it's done in the most mindful way, and not just being, you know, you know, flamboyant about the opportunities. We've been very diligent, perhaps some, some people would criticize that we haven't added some staff where they thought we should have. But I, I know over time, and I understand from the board, that, you know, when you look at it historically, it's problematic, but I don't think this is atypical to what's going on all around us. So I'm happy to work to figure it out. I do think it's defensible based on what we need to be doing, whether it's, you know, educational quality standards, and ratios that they're requiring us to do, some of the content rigor that's happening, you know, in our various programs, part of that we're leaders on, but we also need to comply. And we're close in many, in many places, as Martin said, some of our class sizes, if we really start to poke at that, we're, we're borderline, we're not compliant in some of those sections, so.
So I guess it may be defensible, but you haven't given us enough to defend it yet, is my view. I don't know, I mean, I will take your word on it as far as it being defensible, but I think to go to the community with this, we have to have more to actually show why it's defensible, is what I'm trying to say.
And I'm good with that. I think part of, part of that, I can provide a little bit more of a breakdown historically, we can try to, the problem here is, is, you know, it's not easy for me to do a lot of the background check in some of the human service-related needs, and I don't want to put this all on human service side of the sector, but that's a big part of it. Other parts of it are educational-related things that are coming down for us, and that we need to pay attention to. So those are in part also, also part of the creeps, the creep increases over time. If it's, I will do my best to provide you with kind of some historical, other categories within this, within each of these years, to show where those things have been occurring.
One of the issues I think is, like, for instance, when you're talking about the increases at the high school, you're talking about it being mostly due to tuition students' enrollment, and that's fine, but we never see the breakdown of the high school classes, and so, mostly due to something doesn't really justify it. Do you know what I mean? And that's just-
Well, when we add, so when we add a section, for instance, when we bring in the larger-than-expected class size out of, from the islands, which we appreciate in Georgia, you know, you, one would think we can absorb that, but what happens is, is that our base core programs need to be substantiated, yes, we could- Yes, we could survive, but it would be detrimental to them, the upper end of our programming. We would have, we could fill them and hold them, but we'd be sacrificing some of the other upper-level programming and our AP programming that we have, which have smaller numbers than those base years. But that's in part what we've been able to do well at in helping our kids progress.
But maybe, what I'm saying is, maybe we need to see those numbers, because I, I mean...
The numbers of, like, enrollment, Julie, you mean, as far as, like, class size enrollment?
Yeah, and you're talking about the AP, the upper-level classes being small, and I guess it's a question of how small, and are those hard choices that we're going to have to make?
Yeah, again, but that's not also pure. If you've heard Patrick talk, or any of the high school administrators, when you look at that master schedule, if you take 14 kids and you say 14 small in an AP program, you take them out of that, they're going to go somewhere.
Right.
And they're going to go into yet probably another program that may or may not be able to absorb it. So it's, sometimes it's, they can be fully absorbed, sometimes not, but then it's also about opportunities for students as well. And part of going forward, as we look at Act 46 and the opportunities to work collaboratively, I think this is a big area, a big area for, you know, an opportunity to collaborate, so that those schools, perhaps that don't have the numbers that we have to run those upper programs, could actually join us in some way.
So, and do those upper programs, are those directly helping us be very successful in bringing in tuition students from elsewhere, the one question, and the second would be, is it worth it, that trade-off? That we have a rich program, and it's probably allowing us to draw more people in, which is helping us fund those programs, which is helping us fund that rich program that our own students in the city get to take advantage of. But in the balance of all that, I guess the question is, is that trade-off appropriate?
Well, I mean, I think, I'm biased. I think it's been a great opportunity. I happen to spend, you know, 15 years in Franklin County, and I know some of the reputation that South Burlington, certainly as we brought in Georgia students, that's one of the main things. Patrick's up there tonight, you know, at an eighth-grade fair tonight, and I know there's a high level of interest to come down here based on the climate and the experience, but the programming that's offered by our school. And so when you start to think about taking away some of those experiences, you know, I guess, you know, I'm not in the marketing field, but one would start to say that you start to diminish your opportunities for students, you start to have, you know, a possible net difference in that, particularly some of our other schools that may be facing some cuts in certain areas, you know, and often those are programs that some of those smaller sections that are affected are often those that have worked hard to get to those locations, you know. Now, Riley, did you want to say something?
Oh, well, just about like the AP classes, it's interesting, because I know a lot of people that have chosen, like, schools like BFA or from Georgia and the islands, and I know that, like, for college readiness, a lot of them are having, like, a lot of trouble getting into, like, their top schools or schools that they would really want to go to, because their schools or their high schools didn't offer, like, the AP programs that South Burlington does. It's been really beneficial and a leg up for South Burlington students to have those classes and have intimate atmospheres to be studying.
So, I mean, what else would you like, as we continue, as we walk into the next meeting? I'm hearing a little bit further breakdown on the category.
Well, I guess that, I have, despite the very nice write-up about the justification, given what you're doing with the teachers and all that, I'm having a real hard time with the additional human resources. I'm just wondering, I mean, is this, it's all very important work, but do we need another FTE to do it, or do we just need to accept that it's going to take longer to get it done with our current FTE that we have devoted to that, I guess is the question.
Or can we hire some part-time person to do that?
I would say yes, yes, to all of that.
And I think that's one of the things I think about, is when we make a commitment to bring on an FTE, you know, we're bringing on at least, you know, pick the average salary, but we're bringing on a pretty robust package of benefits as well.
Go ahead.
And committing that, I don't want to say into perpetuity, but based on average tenure for a long time.
Right.
So it's a significant investment that the community is making on behalf of the district that really needs to be justified.
Well, so, I hear kind of prioritization in FTE in some of this, I hear the importance of what happens when you, you know, when you add, that becomes a long-term...
Maybe what some alternatives would be.
Yeah, but I don't want to accept the fact that it wasn't thought through, you know?
No, no, I'm not saying that at all.
I didn't hear you, but it has been well thought through. Part about being a good district is also having capacity, where I use this kind of 85-15 rule a little bit, that I want people to be capacity to about 85, and I want them to be available for other improvements in our program, thinking, collaborating, and moving things forward. I don't know, that's not necessarily the perfect ratio, but that's kind of what I want. Right now, I know that I don't have that. I have certain departments that are tapped out, you know, that I'm really worried about, and it puts the district at risk. So part of the HR side, when we look at, when we look at the same history over time, we look at regulations that have come into play, when I'm running a department of really one and a half for a district our size, when we look at HR services and some of the other capacities, I see that as a missed opportunity and a need. Now, that said, you know, directions from you folks on prioritizing and looking at that, I'm happy to do that. Again, I say this, this is the budget out of the gate, essentially, and on December 16th, that was moving the district forward with the help of the administrators and looking at how we're going to continue to advance the district. This was one that we saw as a group that we felt was needed, but I hear what you're saying.
So one of the things I struggled with is, I think you've done a good job kind of articulating why these positions might be needed, or why these additions in FTE percentages might be needed. What I'm struggling with is, what are the implications of saying no to those things? What are the risks or the lack of opportunities that are going to then be on the table?
Yeah.
That I can't get my head wrapped around yet, so that would be really helpful to know what no means, as opposed to what yes means.
I have an example just to throw out and see if this makes sense. The fundraising, we have a .27 FTE to help coordinate that, because there is an immense amount of fundraising that goes on here.
Right.
And I would say a lot of districts at the business level ignore it. It just kind of happens without, but we're held to a higher standard. If there's a fundraising program that is going on, we know that the business office, the business manager particularly, but then the board is responsible for everything that goes on in the district. So to, we've developed a program that answers all the questions about fundraising, but we don't really have any expertise to run it, to refine it. So it'll still happen, we still recognize the responsibility, but we don't have regular resources to be looking at it, to coordinate it, without that.
So in that scenario, not approving that would be acknowledging we're willing to accept the risk of having something go wrong there.
Exactly.
It's kind of like an unfunded mandate. We've instructed the administration to get control of the fundraising, and it seems that we're obligated to give them the resources to do what we...
Or accept the risk of having those things fail or fall apart, yeah. I mean, that's the trade-off question that I was looking at.
Yep. Thanks, John. So what I'm hearing is perhaps another call on that, you know, what would be the result if it was not?
Right.
And again, you know, these two clinicians that we talked about earlier, obviously we get really good support currently from the Howard Center, that's not what this is about. It was about bringing them on to create additional flexibility for improved outcomes.
Yeah.
So the no would be, you know, we currently do that.
Status quo, yeah.
And again, Joanne's here, I mean, we currently have really, really good service, but this may be, when we look at it, something that...
And that one's slightly different to me, because that's not new bodies in the building. It's different in how we're getting those bodies in the building, but it's the same number of bodies in the building. So I look at those two slightly differently.
I know Dan couldn't be here, but I'll just kind of read the notes he sent, and he had an issue about the FTE ads and suggested that priority consideration be given to first mandated ads netted against any subsidy, required to maintain reasonable class sizes, those accommodation of the growth in number of tuition students, areas where the service can be provided internally at a lower cost than via contracts or consultants. And he did have a suggestion that perhaps the board's subcommittee might be appointed to review the proposed FTE changes.
He also had an issue about the enterprise funds aren't mentioned in the budget.
We can bring that up. He's got a couple other questions, but this is specific to the FTE conversation.
And I guess I would suggest adding, as far as for prioritizing, is, going back to the issue I was talking about, is the richness of the program and how that helps us attract students from the islands. I mean, that one's a little amorphous, perhaps, though, but I think it's part of the...
I think it's general interest, you know, I told you, I met with the realtors, you know, and a lot of those questions that come out, and you gain a lot from the questions that are coming in from people who are thinking of buying a home or a condo in South Burlington. And so, I just know that it's a big part of the conversation around what's my child going to be able to, you know, receive in their educational experience here, and that's been a big, important piece, and certainly feel like it's something we hear a lot of.
It might be helpful, David, too, to break out the tuition students, so, you know, the subset of enrollment could be the tuition students as well, so we know what that trend's been. And by way of example, if, you know, your assessment is that participation in AP programs, then maybe we should know what percentage of tuition students are participating in AP programs, things like that.
Right, right, no, that's helpful. Yeah, I mean, just to state the obvious again, going up to a higher level is that, again, you say it's defensible, but we really need the data to break down, and the central question is, enrollment's going down, or FTEs are going up? We need to explain that with as much detail as we can, so we can also, we can explain to the community, but if there's things we can explain to the state, we've already talked about, we're putting more and more money into social services, and should that really be coming from the ed fund? We're putting more money to meet the state mandates that they have for proficiency-based graduation, personalized learning plans, et cetera. We should be tracking that, that's why our enrollment's going up, because we're getting hammered from around the state, school boards are, for exactly the trend that we're seeing here. And there may be a reason, and I think there is, from what you're saying, the reason why that's happening. So, anyway.
So some more info on that, to make it more defensible, more defensible. Gotcha. So, we'll move on here. I have some pretty specific things from you, and we'll move on. Okay? So, this is in your packet, it's hard to read, we're doing a lot for the audience here tonight, but just wanted, the next on the, this is the one, your bond proposal, and I'm going to let John walk you through the bond proposal and articulate and answer any of your questions that you have regarding this.
Yes, the, I've been talking with, we've brought it up every year, the budget as far as the maturity of debt and the time when we would have a dip in debt service, and also that our stewardship plan continues to grow in sophistication, so there's a lot of things that need to be done in these schools, especially in the area of ADA and remediation. So with that in mind, we, our plan was to come to the board November 18th and give an overview in, say, a three-year view to say, this is, these are projects we're considering, and it could be funded by a big bond of $5.6 million, or, and get some feedback. And I asked the citizens' budget group for this feedback, too, and administrators, et cetera. So, the feedback was, the principal amount of the bond, $5.6 million, is just too much money. The issue would be confusing in light of school relocation and consolidation studies that are taking place. We don't want to add confusion to that issue, we want to keep it simple, because we want to keep our facilities up to speed. That doing any long-term repair upgrades in elementary schools may not be wise in light of the above, and I'm talking about major things, that the bond would focus on the needs of high school and the Tuttle Middle School, including the athletic fields. And then, we should look at a three-year period, which came out of our last board meeting, actually, to complete projects that are, have begun, such as windows in the restrooms at the high school, because you can only get so much done in the summer, and you have to, but it's all similar work now that we've got a plan for. And then finally, why are we bonding for projects now when we have included projects in the operating budget over the last eight years? That's a good question. So we'll try to give you the answer. In light of that feedback, this is a new proposal, here's your bond in the amount of $2.5 million financed over 20 years. So we, and we'll show you the projects that will be included there. The only funds included at the elementary schools are to fund that access road into Orchard School, which is in very severe need of an upgrade, and we're also doing something at Transportation Office. So, the question also was asked about, why are we bonding when we've never done this before, and how does that work with Act 46? So, this isn't the whole, this is just part of what you have in your packet, but these are the projects that are in the, in this $2.5 million. It's, the top part is Munson Field, $715,000, and there's window replacements and restrooms at the high school, but we, the two and a half would include three years of work, three summers of work, to try to get that almost completed. And then there's a, the flooring at the middle school is, cafeteria is really shot, so that has to be done. The gymnasium roof needs to be coated, so sealed for 10 more years. The gym ceiling tile at the high school is essentially dangerous and needs to be taken care of, and then Transportation Office and Parking Lot. So those are the projects that are included. The debt service, it was in a board question, it's not in this slide, but the debt service amounts to about $186,000 a year, which is .85 cents per year after the first year. The first year, there's only a interest payment, so it's, and actually, we've included interest in the proposal already, so, actually, we've included too much, because we used the $5.6 million as a basis, but that's what it would cost the highest year, based on, it's just under a penny, .86 cents. The, there was also a question about, what are we doing, are we doing zero at all the schools? We have 100, well, $205,000 in facility repairs, of which 190 is for the schools themselves, and $30,000 in each elementary school, and $50,000 at the high school and middle school. It's for smaller projects, but things that need to be done, and there's a list in the board questions there of those projects. And we, the list also shows things that are on the table that need to be done, but with $30,000 of funding in each elementary, what can be done? So, we're not doing, we're not going to plan on doing nothing, but there's projects there too, because we have the buildings, we need to take care of them.
And I think it was in the spirit of the bond, the bond was working to deal specifically with the high school and the middle school, a little bit of Orchard, as John said, around the parking entrance at Orchard, but others that we do have in the operating budget monies, as we have in the past, that's been basically how we've carried all of, you know, except for other early 1995 bonds, it's always been in our operating budget, under Act 46, obviously, and at the same time, when our bonded debt is coming down, we feel it makes good sense at the present time, under those two conditions, bonded debt reduction going on, and Act 46, to do a bond, to take care of kind of these one-time, they're not, I guess they could be needed in the longer future, but one-time expenditures that don't have an overwhelming load on your operating budget. So that was really our drive to do this at the time, and I've been asking about this with John in the past, but as you start to look at that bonded debt and where we were, this certainly... that bonded debt and where we were, this certainly came to that time.
I'm gonna make sure I heard something, so I think you said 186,000 a year, or is the debt service?
Yes, yes.
And the bu, and the budget proposal that we looked at most recently assumed a larger bond?
Yeah, it had interest.
So will, there'll be a decrease in that operating?
It'll be a slight adjustment, that's interest on the principal, and it doesn't accumulate very much the first year.
Right, right, okay, thanks.
So what's the, do we have an estimate of the impact to the taxpayer of the bond, this bond?
Yes, it's 86 cents.
Per?
I'm not 86 cents, I'm sorry.
Point zero.
Point, less than one penny on the tax rate in the, in the highest year. So, the first year, it's, it's .25, this approximation, and I, I.
You put that in the budget board question?
You have any questions, yes.
Well, do we have something that would say, because I, I mean, I feel like we're understating the impact on the budget numbers that you covered on the summary sheet because it excludes the bond? So, we're basically asking the taxpayer to take on some long-term debt with this bond? So I think we need to articulate what that means.
Right. In the, in first year, the impact is very small. Then afterward, it's, it becomes, the highest payment is $186,000, which equates to a .85, I believe, from memory, but you can have it there.
So, I mean, can we, can we articulate to the average taxpayer, this is what they'll see as an incremental expense over the next 20 years?
Sure, yeah.
I think that's what we need to.
Yes, that's right.
Need to say.
That's right.
So, I mean.
Go ahead, Eric.
It doesn't trouble me that we're gonna spread the cost out of these projects that may be benefiting us for years to come, over the years. I mean, to pay the, ask the taxpayers today to pay the entire mall for a turf field that students in 10 years or whatever the life of this is are gonna be using, I like the idea of spreading. I mean, I think there's, outside of the Act 46 consideration, I think there's a benefit for spreading, for doing it in that manner, so.
Is it, is it a fair statement, though, that for the turf field will completely need to be replaced again before we pay out the debt for upgrading the turf field, if we do it that way?
Yes, because the bond, the bond is issued for 20 years. The average life of all the projects together is about 22 years.
Yep.
And, but you can bond for longer than the life of a specific.
Right, yeah, I know, yeah.
So, yes, that's true.
Okay.
That was the wrong example.
No, I mean, we, we question that heavily.
Let's go with the windows.
Yeah, let's go with the windows, we're gonna take advantage of the windows for the year.
No, but Ed O'Carroll did mention that the newer turf fields last longer, like we've gotten 12 years out of the one that should have only lasted 10, but I think the newer ones were maybe 15 years?
They definitely are 15.
That'd be good.
Well, we stretched, we stretched, yeah.
We stretched, but the newer ones will last longer than just the expected 10.
Right, right.
That's a bad example, that's wrong.
That was a good.
You're still paying for it after it's gone, I'm just saying.
Elizabeth, I, this next line is hard to read, but what we did was, we took all these projects that, except for the turf fields, and added that $780,000 to do projects that we normally would have put in the operating budget and calculated what it would do to the tax rate and to the cap.
Right.
And the main thing I forgot in here is there, is there a penalty on the tax rate? Yes, there would be. It's above the limit. So, so that's another consideration, I can't say, Act 46 is not a consideration for going to a bond because we, we would have to defer some things. And believe me, we defer things judiciously over the time we've done budgets because the operating budgets.
But this is a one-year impact, right?
Yes, if, if we did it, yes.
So if we did it, so if.
Well, it would have ongoing impact.
Well, I know, but what you, what you, this scenario is just for 2017.
But it's, the expense is done, we wouldn't have it either, it wouldn't be a bond.
Right. In essence, it would cost us less total dollars if we did it this way, but we'd have the tax penalty. So if the tax penalty goes away, it might have been a better model.
That's one of our guiding principles, not to have a tax penalty.
Right.
Yep. But I think to your point around what would be the implications if these were, so our budget looked good, you know, the prognosis on our, on our budget worksheet that you saw earlier, but if we were to include all of these things, what would that mean? So I think there was some real transparency around if we weren't doing the bond and we put all of that in, we'd be at, we'd be over the threshold. And we've been there before where we've done what we've called, rescheduled our stewardship plan, and we've kind of triaged that over, over the years to say, what can we wait on? And it's helped us in some ways, we schedule them so there's just some distribution that's not all.
But just out of curiosity, though, if we did, if we do the double taxation, if that were to come to be.
Yes.
I mean, wouldn't, shouldn't we do a trade-off on the cost of funding the long-term debt versus the cost of double taxation?
Yeah, the interest payments over time.
Right.
Well, I think it would be cheaper to do the double taxation, but it is, you know, I haven't done the calculation, but I think it would be.
And do we know how?
But we, we, if we were gonna hit the double taxation, the numbers.
And when we get to the worksheet, we can do some of this.
Yeah, we can.
And that might be a better place to do that.
I haven't actually calculated the double taxation because I never thought.
Well, it's only by that, it's only by that amount, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
I mean, the other part is what sets us up, this has also been with the unknown of where we're headed with implication of Act 46, what does it mean in year two? We've had the conversation if we are at or over or below, or how far below. We've administratively put forth what we felt we needed to continue to move the district forward, that was the process that we used, because at that time, we didn't really understand what the, what the, what the internal state metrics were gonna, were gonna be. So, anyway, let's, let's move on. This was the, you can go.
Same thing we've had before. Just wanted, on the athletic fields, we've saved, we've accumulated $75,000 net of costs on the fields already. So, we've rented out to soccer teams and the Vermont Ice Storm when they were around. And, and we have, we take our field maintenance out of that, and we also pay for someone to administer the field, be the field event coordinator for big events, who's gonna be in charge of calling the game if there's lightning and that kind of thing. So, over the last six years, I think, let's say six years, we've dedicated $75,000 in that way. There are no booster funds, alumni funds, anything else, though.
Foundation funds?
No.
This has seemed to me like a project that would have been a great one for alumni or foundation to focus on because it has a limited lifetime that's long enough that it could have been a long-term fundraising opportunity. Was this ever discussed or?
Well, again, the foundation, as you know, is fairly, is fairly quiet right now. So, with alumni, alumni is, still has an active part, it's not been something that we pushed, it's not been one of those areas that, you know, I've identified as a really attractive one, Elizabeth.
Is there an opportunity to kind of say the district will fund half and the balance might need to come through fundraising efforts? Is this a question?
Yeah, I, I think that that's, in the future, I think it is, we're at a place, right, the current reality that we have a turf field that, you know, if we don't repair it, we're not gonna be able to use it. So, you can't really do half of it and.
We should go there for the bathrooms and the locker rooms, truly, I mean, that's improvement, field improvement, which isn't just the turf, I mean, if we want to try.
Oh, you mean the team rooms and bathrooms.
You mean on, like, alumni or foundation?
What about, so what about that expansion? What are you thinking there for possible track?
Well, there's, there's two parts to this. The, if you go look at the track, the shot put is in the, on the turf field in the, and by the east.
Right.
It shouldn't be there. There's no pole vault, there's the high jump, and it's, it's all in the wrong places. So that's part of it. The second part is the track, to, to be certified for meets, we need eight lanes, at least on the straightaway. So we're looking to see to expand the, the track itself to be eight lanes, not just six.
That's the straightaway, that's not the whole track, though.
Right.
It's just, and again, that's also makes it more appealing for larger meets and larger potential for, for rental, too. Us hosting them, also receiving revenue, et cetera.
And also, it, it, with a few words, you don't see the whole, whole thing, but fencing in behind the bleachers so that equipment can be stored there securely and from the weather, that kind of thing, that's, that's, that would be included there, too.
So that's a one-time cost?
Yeah, the track would last longer than the 15 years, it'd be 20 years.
Yeah, when you say one time, it's one time for a good stretch, I don't want to say it's, it's not ever. I mean, we're still gonna have to budget money to care for it and treat it, you know, all that stuff, so as far as getting it done, it is a one-time. Okay?
And this is just the windows, we've talked about the windows for a long time. This would combine three, three groups and tells you where it would be. The restroom remodel, if this goes through the summer of 2016, that restroom that's near the business office would be finished, we have that plans all ready to roll, and then the next two years, we do more restrooms, men's and women's. And the cafeteria floor at the middle school, it's coming apart and we have to do asbestos remediation a lot more than we need to be doing right now, so that's why that's in its pretty high priority. And so forth, the roof, gym tile in the, in the high school, and the Orchard Road and the bus office upgrade.
So next is on to the capital reserve fund, and so again, we've moved on from the bond request or proposal to the establishing a capital reserve fund. We've talked about this for a good amount of time. This was, again, initially talked about to try to, you know, do away with the ongoing yearly kind of ups and downs of kind of facility stewardship implications on the operating budget would be to establish a capital reserve fund. In order to do this, money's in the operating budget, but would be allocated and has to be voted on to establish the fund to be able to fund a certain amount of money into that capital reserve fund that would go towards these particular projects. So, what, what I've, what we've provided is kind of the initial phase to just, the proposal would be to start it at $50,000 in that we begin to, number one, establish the fund and then to begin to perhaps build on it over time with the idea that if you have, you know, X amount of money that's needed to accommodate in any one year, that if you have a sum balance, looking forwardly to the year, if you need to then add 100 more thousand dollars to it to complete that, then you can. If then the next year, you only need 75, you're able to do that, again, carrying the balance, looking at kind of the, you know, the baseline, if you can, over time to establish that. It's a much easier way, what happens now in schools, we, we have to do a roof, programming has to come out, it has to come out of the operating budget, so you get these major peaks and valleys in programming versus facility stewardship or capital reserve fund allows for, down the road, to establish a much more of a steady flow of that.
David, you were saying that, I think I heard you say you need a vote on.
Initiating the fund?
That's correct.
You don't need to vote on using it once it's created?
Once it's created, then we have the opportunity to put money into it, you.
And then we can manage it from that point?
Then we manage it from there.
So that would mean, at this point, you're.
Three votes.
We've got three valid items this year, you're proposing.
That's right. It would be budget, it would be the bond, establish a capital reserve, right?
So, John, if this, if we already had this capital reserve in place for this budget year, would we, would it be included in the cap?
No.
If we had it before.
I guess if we had it in place, if we wanted to spend it.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out if later they do something like this to us, is, would this be included?
Well, that's a good point. We don't have it, so I haven't thought about that.
Okay, yeah.
I'll look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought for some reason capital reserve funds were not included.
Not included, I believe that to be true, but, but, let's, we'll, so the first is 50,000 and the implication, the second was 150 start, and the third was a 300. Obviously, if this was to be established, then we would, we would, those, some of the projects that we identified earlier would be in part connected to the capital reserve as they are connected to the stewardship plan. I mean, I, I think there's some concern, I have some concern on three valid items, our, our budget, our bond, and then a capital reserve, but I do think it's at a time and place that is important perhaps to establish. I don't know what the future might be, I think that whatever might happen with Act 46, I think there are going to be incentives and should be to care for your facilities in a more appropriate way and not be programmatically harmed as much has happened in the past. And we have many examples in, across Vermont particularly where things have been cared for, and then it's been major draw on the Ed Fund when we have, you know, major, major projects that have had to, been absorbed.
So David, you just walked us through for the bond, which is in essence serving capital needs, the list of items you would target with that money, do we have a list of items for that 300,000 or the 50 or the 150 in either of those scenarios?
We didn't, I didn't go down and identify those, those would be coming out of the stewardship plan.
There's, yeah, if we go back to here.
Or would we reduce the bond by the, if we approved a $300,000 capital reserve this year, would we reduce the bond by that amount?
No, it would be for, if you go back here, we had projects listed in 2018 and 19, instead of being 2.5 million, was 5.6. Now there's a lot of blanks there.
Yep.
There would be roofs at the elementary schools, paving at Chamberlain, which the parking lots are pretty, needs to be reorganized, bathrooms, that kind of thing. So again, it'd be part of our stewardship plan, but we'd be, we'd be purposeful in saying, okay, we need to have X amount of dollars. I'll give you a good example, in 2021, the roof in this, this whole building needs to be replaced, and it's over a million bucks if you do a standing seam roof or 800,000 if you do a membrane roof. So, that's, that's something could really put your hat on.
Yep, yep. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So the 300,000, I mean, if it's 300,000, whatever the capital reserve fund is, does that get counted towards cost per pupil?
Yeah, it would.
It would, so, okay. So, I, part of my thinking is if we're, if we're facing this cap next year, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, that we should go up to the 1.69% increase and pocket it away in something like a capital reserve or a contingency fund, just to make, make it easier for next year's budget, if that makes sense.
Right, so this 300,000 makes it go to 1.31, so it's gonna be a little.
See, I'm just not sure of what the implications are if you go right up to the ceiling, what will be then the, what would be then the distribution or, or what will happen then based on our next then target?
Yeah, they, they, right, right.
If you went right up to spending, then our, our threshold limit may then be expanded downward. Those that were under may be given more latitude, you know, I don't know that.
Can we find that out?
No, they can change the rule, whatever they decide.
So, my thinking was. There's a risk with doing that.
Right, and I, well, I was, the reason that, why I think the capital reserve fund is appropriate is I think that whatever the changes are gonna happen, I do think that establishing it will be advantageous for us, even if it was to be established at the 50,000.
Yeah.
Then we would be in, in a place that would be more favorable than we are perhaps today.
Yeah. I think, I think the notion of establishing it is a good, fiercely prudent idea. I think we've tried it in the past and we just haven't had a good year to take it.
That's right.
I, I have a couple of concerns, one is taking the three valid items to the community before we even have had a discussion around master planning and visioning, because any of those scenarios would likely require some kind of bonding over time, multiple bonds more than likely, not any of them, some of the scenarios.
Yep.
And we don't know where that will fall out yet, but, you know, this is basically kind of asking for money on top of an operating budget, and that has some legitimate specificity to it, but it is in the, in advance of having those conversations. The other area, and I'll just share, I, Dan also sent this over, and I, has the rest of the board had a chance to see Dan's comments?
Yeah.
Let me just make sure that they're kind of voiced in public as well, but, one, he's saying, you know, a quick estimation of the effect on the proposed actions on FY18 tax rates suggests that while a reduction in tax in FY17 may be expected, that the following year, there may be a significant tax. the following year, there may be a significant tax increase, this results from two actions, it's the use of what he refers to as windfalls, but it's the, how do, how do we refer to that, is it the surplus or the rollover?
Carryover.
Carryover, to cover ongoing expenses accommodated by the move to debt financing of stewardship expenses, and then he talks about the two carryover opportunities, one is one point eight million from prior periods, and then the three hundred thousand dollar decline in debt reduction payments that we're talking about using the bond in addition to other items, both of those are one-time events, so his suggestion would be considering using the carryover to fund the turf and track replacement, the windows and the restroom upgrades, and then using the three hundred thousand to see the capital reserve fund to buffer the district from future bonded indebtedness. So, I do, I worry about the precedent that this is setting in terms of future budgets as well, and, and, you know, we talk about swings in capital improvements, talk about swings in tax rates as well, which, which is a concern, we've had two years where I think it's been at six, six percent, approximately.
We've had some hundred years, yeah, we've shared that.
Yeah.
Even though our budget increases have been...
Right.
And, and I guess the one thing is that it is kind of one-time, but it's been one-time for the past six budgets I've seen, I mean, it seems like always...
Not, not at that amount, though.
No, it's pretty high this time, that's true.
Yeah, this is high.
I do, I do saw his memo, and the carryover's not one point eight, though, it's one point three five, it's very significant, but it's not as, the surplus, just, just want to get that out there. But also, our, we had, we got more in tuition that made it up to one point eight, and that's, his number's right that way.
Okay, from the tuition.
Yeah, just to clarify that.
Yeah, the answer.
Do you have, do you have thoughts on his recommendations?
Well, it, I do, the, if we put the turf and the windows in, then we'd be over the spending cap, you know, that's the, that's the, that would be the impact. And the second thing is what would we do with the roof if the gym is leaking, you know, we, we have some pretty immediate needs that that doesn't take care of.
It seems like the same, it's the, asking the question differently of whether we just don't do the bond and do it in the operating budget before, and is it gonna cost us more to pay the double tax versus the cost?
Well, I think, I think his question also is getting at the issue of using the carryover to fund ongoing operating expenses.
Right.
Which is showing up in a, in a net reduction to taxes, so that, that's a one, these are a one-time event, too, so you'll get that big swing next year, when you have to incorporate those ongoing operating expenses with no windfall, or, I don't want to call it a windfall, carryover.
Right, right, right.
Oh, it, it, the odds of next year being a tax increase are, are pretty high, I think, and, so...
And, and I guess that's part of, I think part of my, what I'm thinking about is, I mean, it's always nice to deliver a little bit of good news, but we also have a complicated ballot that we're talking about right now, and I wonder if we can mitigate that a little bit by flattening a two-year effect versus having a little bit lower and then a potentially high spike next year.
Well, I mean, there's, there's one thing we could do, I, I've thought about this for years, if, if, if the ballot, it's different bonding for improvements like a roof or a new driveway that everybody's getting, you know, their wheels are falling off, but then you have athletics, and that sometimes brings out support, and it brings out opposition, too. So, if, if we didn't have any Act forty-six or a good revenue source to carry over, I would say the turf has to be replaced, so we could do a lease. Now, that doesn't go to the voters, that goes, it's the board's purview, and that's how UVM financed theirs.
We, we lease the improvement on the, the new turf, it's a whole new turf, right?
Yes.
You lease the turf?
We lease the turf?
Yeah, yes, policing, yes, like I say, UVM's victory, I think it's victory field, their virtue.
Virtue, 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 no.
Yeah, whatever, sorry.
And so, if anything goes wrong, do they maintain the turf if we're leasing it?
No, no, it's similar to our bus, we, we lease, we lease a bus for five years, and then we own it for ten, but it's our, it's a capital lease, we own it.
Different mechanism with different...
And then these payments are done.
How much does that cost relative to a bond, I mean, the, the financing charge?
Oh, it's, it's, right now, it's pretty low, you know, it's three percent. I don't want to complicate things because it doesn't take care of the track, but it's, it's, it's a possibility.
And I think, Martin, you made a good point around, you know, sometimes the implications for the use, you know, is spread out, is not spread out sometimes when we put big, big items, and that's that peak and valley of this kind of facilities, and, and I think the bond, you know, we are gonna pay on it, but it's gonna be a pay that's gonna happen for those that are currently using it and those that will, will, will use it in the future, so, I mean, I think there's some merit in, in that, you know, the long-term expenditures are spread out, not, you know, those big, those larger, particular ones.
Well, yeah, but arguably, not, not but, and you could arguably say that creation of a capital reserve fund would allow you, those are, those have been, and they will continue to be very predictable expenses.
That's right.
Those are not the same things as we have with the drainage at Orchard or things like that.
Right. And again, this is not the first time that we've had the conversation, I don't know for probably a lot of you, maybe Elizabeth, we've had the conversation to establish it.
Yeah.
So, what's the downside to doing the lease option?
Well, the voters don't get to say.
Well, they, they do because, because it's in the budget.
Right.
It's there, it's part of the budget. I'm just wondering, I mean, is there, is there an opportunity to do kind of what Dan is suggesting here, use more of this one-time money to cover some of these other things, but then to avoid going over the cap?
To the lease and the operating budget, yeah.
To avoid going over the cap, do a lease arrangement?
I mean, it works for that three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar part of the, of the project.
It just covers that portion.
They gotta lease that whole.
You can't do that to the track.
No, I understand that part.
And it also, when you lease, you are tying up operating funds for, for five, five periods, opera budget, budgetary periods.
And that lease amount is not exempt from the cap, either?
No, the lease is definitely not, where the bond is, wouldn't be.
Yeah.
So, I, I know there's other ways of looking at it, but, you know, that's...
Yes, we are.
Do we have feedback from the Citizens Finance Group on the current proposal on the bond and the capital reserve fund?
We've, we've talked about it a couple times, and Monday is our next meeting, we wanted to have this meeting first, and so, I don't know if Susan or Annette want to discuss anything, or Diane, about it, I know you, all three seen what we talked about as far as facilities.
I think we were in agreement that it was a good idea, it can't hurt to have the voters vote on whether to have the fund, it's always a good idea to have the fund, I, I agree that it is, a lot of things to have on the ballot, and they could just strike them all down, so it could go either way.
Yeah, I worry too about, I mean, we're, we're kind of, I'm just, I'm just worrying tonight, again, when you, you know, a lot of times we have questions about if someone doesn't vote for our operating budget, what are they voting for or against sometimes?
Yeah.
So, for instance, if we put the athletic fields in this bond, you know, maybe people are voting, I agree with the windows, but not those athletic fields, we, you know, we run the risk of, of not getting anything, and, you know, I, I worry a little bit about that, too.
Yeah.
I don't know whether you could include a lifespan of what we're going in with it, and people might think, oh, it's only gonna last us ten years, or, and, you know, to educate people that the current one's already two years past.
Mm-hmm.
I think the communication is paramount, and we, we always talk about this, so whatever your decision is, and whatever we...
Well, we can do that in our, in our, in our budget article as well.
Well, yeah, and the bottom line is, if we do all these things, is the tax, resident tax rate still going down? If you do the bond, if you do, I mean, if you add all that money...
We, we put the bond interest, which is, in the first year, it's minimal.
Right.
Fifty thousand dollars or less, the, I don't mean minimal, that's fifty thousand dollars, but, so that's already in the debt service that we presented in the total forty-six million dollars. The, this, this does show you that it's under the cap, and there's still a tax decrease.
See, I mean, I think that we can get away with five, six different things on the ballot if we show everyone.
Now, you're just giving greedy.
I mean, I think that's the bottom, that's the bottom line of what...
He's the legislator.
Well, no, I, I think that's the bottom line of what people are gonna look at, is, what does this cost me, oh, the tax are...
But I'm also, I'm also saying, let's take a little longer-term view, too.
Well, sure.
I mean, 'cause, 'cause, you know, I, my memory is a tax barrel, the only good is the most recent tax increase or decrease I received, so if we know this is gonna spike up, and, John, what I'm hearing you say is the bond itself will add about a penny to the one fifty, one eight seven, is that right?
Next year, yeah.
Next year.
Yeah.
So, that would be...
But, but, won't the capital reserve fund that we're establishing be of use next year, I mean, won't we be...
No, no, we, you, it has to be then included in a subsequent budget to be used, so it accumulates.
So, it won't be, it won't be available for us next year if this is on the ballot this year, that three hundred thousand dollars?
No, 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 there'd be no reason to reserve it, we just put it in the budget as an operating expense for one year.
Okay, so it's not available until some time?
You can't put money in it until they've approved it, and so we have to put money the year following, because now we have the mechanism.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's also very important to educate the public that improving the track, well, and as you said, the track brings in revenue, and improving the track will help us to qualify for state meats and bring in even more revenue in that regard, it'll allow us to hold, you know, to host more meats and rent it out more and be more attractive to rent and therefore bring in more revenue, and, so...
So, this, this isn't gonna have any impact on this year's or next year's taxes unless we decide next year to put money into the capital reserve that we are establishing this year.
Right.
And next year, we can decide not to put any, depending what's going, so this is not relevant to necessarily...
It's a vote on an instrument that will be available to us, not any money.
So, if you looked at the, if you looked at the stewardship plan, and let's just say for FY eighteen, you had, there was three hundred thousand dollars of need, and you had three hundred thousand dollars in, then, you know, you're able to use that, and that, you, you know, basically, what you're trying to do is be proactive in your use, so that you're not...
Couldn't, couldn't... No, I understand that part, but if we're trying to, if the goal, one of the goals, if it's a chief goal, that we're trying to even out the next two years, this is not really part of the discussion, the real discussion is...
I think it could be, though, you could create a contingency fund based on the vote on the ballot, that you would earmark contingency funds to fund the capital reserve fund.
Put money into it, they would not be Act forty-six impacted.
Oh, oh, I misunderstood that, I thought we couldn't put money in.
No, once this year, this year we can't, next year we can.
You can do, but you could earmark, I think you can earmark a contingency in this year's budget.
Okay, so we can earmark three hundred thousand dollars?
I guess it's a question, I shouldn't be presumptuous, is that, could we do that?
No, you can earmark without going to the voters for capital reserve.
Okay, so there's no...
I was just saying, I think...
You can flag it, you can't put it in the capital reserve until after it's approved.
But, but, the after it's approved, does that mean that, all right, well, it's been approved, and we have this contingency fund, can we shift it over to the capital fund?
The day after the vote.
The day after the vote, right, right.
I'm not following it, I'm sorry.
No, I think, I think the...
We've done it, meaning, meaning a juror, we confuse him.
I think, once, so, once, once it's established, right?
No, I'm saying budget in FY seventeen, a contingency fund of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we know we have some, I'm stuck on windfall.
Carryover.
Carryover, so whatever the amount is, and it's in contingency, the same way we would budget for positions we don't know we need yet, or whatever it might be.
And then we push it.
And then when the vote comes in, assuming it's positive, then we fund that account.
So, we have, do we...
March second, we fund that cap with a hundred and fifty thousand.
That sounds good to me, John.
Well, no, in June, July.
It's probably totally illegal.
I'm understanding, 'cause I'm, legally, I don't know.
Yeah, that is a question.
What you're recommending is just to establish a capital reserve fund with no money necessarily in it?
No, establish a contingency account that would be deployed if the voters approve a capital reserve fund.
The assumption being we can't put any money in the capital reserve fund until we, until we have one.
Right.
So, the only, the, the first day you have a capital reserve fund approved by the voters is by definition empty, because you just got the mechanism approved, so all she's saying is if we have money sitting over here, the day after that vote, can we put it in the capital reserve?
So, we could deploy it, and use it.
Let us find out.
I think you have to specify a amount in the capital reserve, not just...
To, to get it initiated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but we can...
Then that's the base assumption we had wrong.
So, otherwise, we would have done it a year, we would have done it longer ago, because it's been discussed many times, but when budgets are always tight, so that's why we haven't acted on it.
Well, and, and I am saying it's in a contingency up until then, so it would be hard to justify even contingencies of that amount.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, you probably want to get into some modeling here?
Well, we want to get you back to the budget worksheet, and we can take into some...
Well, the one, one area I think that Dan brings up, that we haven't had a discussion about is enterprise funds, and I think before we model anything, he kind of brought up the point that we haven't had that discussion, he does, he points out the line item of fifty thousand for nutritional services, which it sounds like we are subsidizing that again, and that it will still operate in the red, correct?
Yes, last year, it operated fifty-two thousand dollars in there.
And don't forget to mention that he's carrying Rich Cassidy's torch as well, as far as the issue.
Yes.
And whoever replaces Dad next year is gonna have to continue on with that.
And, and we are supposed to be seeing monthly reports on that, that we haven't seen in many months.
And, and I think the ongoing conversation is, you know, he, he's struggling, as we have had many conversations with this board and other boards, around why the district is paying down a loan it made to Nutritional Services to operate, and basically saying that should we either let the loan float along with ad hoc ups and downs, or the district might adopt a policy of granting, not loaning, nutritional service funds to cover deficit, and simultaneously writing off any loan that's more than, say, two or three years old.
Didn't we get that answer, that we can't do that?
What's that?
Didn't we get that answer a few times?
If we, if we pay extra, can we take that out of the cap?
No.
Well, he makes a good point, that it's kind of, the taxpayers kind of get to pay twice on this, when the expense is incurred, and as we loan Nutritional Services money to operate with a deficit, so it's, it's an ongoing issue that has gotten better, no doubt, but the fact that we're still earmarking in this budget cycle fifty thousand.
Right, last year was twenty, kind of due, but we had a deficit last year of fifty thousand dollars, and that's the reason it's bad.
So, before we move on, I just, we'll do a quick recap, and then we're gonna go to the, the budget worksheet and models and some of this, so what I've heard is, to the eight, to the FTEs, what I heard is you'd like a little bit more on some clarity and perhaps another column, what would know, if we were to not do it, what would be the impact?
And a breakdown by category.
Yeah, and, and within the, within the category, also some of the mandated ads that have come to be as a result, and I also heard breaking out some of what tuition students are, more specifically the tuition students, and then also the number of students or participation in AP programming, also specific to our, some of our tuition students, or those, those other ads, does that seem to resonate with what you have on FTE?
Well, and you have to really, I mean, you have to talk about the Human Resources additional FTE, and, and you have to really break down an explanation, as detailed as it can be, for why the trend of enrollment going down and FTEs are going up.
Yeah, so, you know, I can, I'm gonna, we'll do the justification, we'll do, we'll do our, our work on this, but I think out of the gate, even with justification, I mean, are you, are you wanting me to be less, lesser on the FTEs, you know, given what you know, given what community, I mean, is there some desired direction that you'd like to recommend to me? I could certainly do this, I'm gonna do this exercise, and I'm wanting a little bit of direction, I don't want to come to the next... I don't wanna come to the next meeting and not satisfy, if, if, again, out of the gate, regardless of your validation and questioning, you just think eleven point four-four over the previous year is just, just, just a non-starter, then I need to perhaps come in with something less, but.
Well, if we've asked for alternatives.
Yeah.
How would those services get rendered, if they're justified? I'll speak for myself, and I just think the overall enrollment and FTE trends aren't justified at the current level, so.
I think, I mean, on its face, it's not justified, but that's not looking behind, and that's what I'm asking for. I mean, have we really had to add a half dozen FTEs of teachers because of more rigorous standards that we're getting from the state? I don't know, I mean, or because we feel it's a necessity to continue to draw people from the islands? Maybe, I don't, I don't know that. Or, you know, are we having to add another six on, for social services, for, you know, that we're having more difficult cohorts, because we are running into problems with students because parents are addicted to opiates? I don't know, I mean, that opiate addiction across the state is causing increases in costs in education, social services, et cetera. So, digging down, they may be justified, but on its face, with the way the trends look, I agree, it's not justified.
You have a couple of questions.
Can I make a comment on enrollment? I know you may see a thirty-person, thirty-student drop from year to year, but it's not thirty students in one grade.
No, we know.
It's not like the second grade that you can remove an FTE, you see a trickling through all the grades. So, it's gonna take several years of this trickling before you can actually remove an FTE. I just, I mean, I've looked at the enrollments by grade by grade and all the other stuff that I do with John, and it's, I just wanted to point that out, that even though you're seeing a drop in enrollment, you gotta remember, it's trickled through twelve grades.
I think we recognize that.
Yeah, but what we're seeing is added FTEs, we're not seeing even a flat FTE, that's the challenge.
I'm sorry, that's more at the elementary school level. I mean, where we're seeing a lot of the FTEs being added is at the high school, where there's more flexibility as far as class sizes and such. So, I mean, I agree with you completely, particularly on the elementary school level.
Yeah, well, it's also for the high school, where there's trickling.
Right, on, on some of the core classes and such. But I don't think we're seeing as much of the increase on the core classes as much as the higher-level classes that have a different justification, I think.
Yeah.
You know, the richness of the program and such.
Diane, you have a question?
I just wanna ask a question and make a comment. So, when you contract for services, students are receiving those services through contracts, and they're not counted as FTEs?
That's correct.
So, when you bring them in as FTEs, you're increasing the number of FTEs, but you're really providing the same services that aren't accounted, you know, so you, do you know what I mean? You're not, you're just being more transparent in a way about the numbers of people that are in the FTEs serving our student population directly through our school system as employees versus through contracted services. So, I think that's important to consider, and I know that, I know the school-based clinicians, but I also wonder about the BCVAs, and what impact, so those are now going to be added to our employee count in FTEs, but we also contract for those services, so we think about that. It's not all a change and increase in service, so the FTE count is going up, but their services are being provided now through contracts. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but you know, as well as I do, we've been on the other side of the argument of, should we bring these employees in full-time if we're utilizing them? So, there would be that level of control and management and deployment and so forth, and the argument from administration was, no, that didn't make any sense at the time. So, it, I've heard it both sides on that particular position.
School-based clinicians.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, it seems like it could be a benefit to the district to have those as part of the staff, but the communication in the community is, our FTEs are going up, but these are services that we've already been paying for through contracts. So, you just have to think about that.
And I, and I, I do think that's a valid point, and I think there's a couple that are clear, and if there's others that are in that same book, that are not as clear as the paperwork, I mean, that's some of the defensible information that, that I think we're asking for, is if there's, because two of them are very clear to me, that's exactly what it is, and I completely agree. If there's more, when you add up that eleven, that are really just a move of a different person doing the job, another employee versus a contractor, that's a whole different conversation than, we've got more people in the building every day in FTEs.
Yeah, and I, I would add, though, taking on the responsibility of the employee and the associated benefits.
I would agree, yeah.
Is a commitment that should be considered in that equation, too.
Absolutely, it's a different conversation than, it's new people all, all of us, yeah.
So, I mean, we have gone back and forth, and that, when I say we've, we've gone from, you know, bringing contracted service people in, and we've also gone the other way, and that's often, I mean, I, I think that's gonna continue to exist, and it should be kind of a cost-benefit analysis, you know, and I say benefit to our students' analysis, and we, and I think we're at this, and this is a particular place on these clinicians, where we're looking at the benefit. So, we, we've asked this question a lot, in some cases, the number of students that we need to serve, it's not cost-beneficial, it's more cost-beneficial to go out and contract, but in some cases, when we have higher needs, and we have, can service them better with our own FTE and not have fractional folks coming in, and not knowing our, our students as well and families, then there's a benefit there that, by having them, you know, having them in the FTE category. So, we, we've definitely, at least in my time here, eleven years, we've gone back, we've gone in different routes, and this is, again, a planned and thoughtful conversation.
I wonder if I could just get two minutes, but Joanne could talk about, her fourth question that came up before we get into this, about the change between tuition and contracted services. It's not employee versus contracted services, but we've had a pretty big shift in tuition, kids who are going out for services rather than coming in, and it was noted on our projections and our, our, our budget, and do you, do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
As far as, how do you want the questions?
Well.
I don't follow you either. Why are you answering?
Well, look, it's specifically the Howard Center, the bills have doubled. We have so many more kids going out for services, and your strategy is to get them.
To try and have them served within the district.
Yes.
I mean, it's less expensive, and it's also better for the student, and our mission to have all kids meet the ends, they're gonna get a better education if they're here in our schools, because of what we do at South Burlington. And I was also, didn't get to do my special ed report last time, last meeting, too, and some, some of our disability categories are also rising. Autism and emotional disturbances over time, we talked about the opiate, I don't know if it's directly related to that, but we have more needs for kids in the district, and many of those kids are so significantly challenged if they're being served outside the district at a, at a high cost, the tuition, that's why you see those, you've been looking at those big bills from Howard Center. And our objective is to try and have the services in here in the schools, so that we can allow them to access the AP classes, or some of those classes, they don't, they don't have an opportunity to do it, they're in a therapeutic school. And we need to have good, good quality teachers, we need to have clinicians who can help work with families, we need to have highly-trained behavior analysts, so that we can have those things in place for kids. And when you have the staff in, on your, when you have the, the FTEs, as you've been talking about, when they are our FTEs, we get a better bang for our buck, because they work for us, they have better access, they go to staff meetings, they're part of our culture, they not only work with those students that have the needs, but they become a part of the system and are able to improve the system for all kids. So, that's the benefit to having the FTEs, rather than paying the contract. Also, the tuition is, as you know, it's a lot of dollars that we spend per child to have that, have that in place. So, that's why those costs have gone up.
And I know we, I know we talked about this at one point, and it's always tough, right in the heat of budget development, to, to access new information, but we talked about a proxy for what you're talking about, Joanne, like the number of referrals, for instance.
Number of referrals for?
For, for special services of, of some kind, to the Howard Center, things like that.
To Howard Center, as far as?
Well, what you're talking about is that there are more kids having to be educated outside of our school system because of special needs, whatever.
Those decisions are made by an IEP team.
Correct.
So, it's not, it's not a referral, it's really a, a team of people, so there's a.
But it sounds like there are more of those.
Yeah.
So, so that's a piece of information that would inform.
Some of the needed staffing.
Correct. How, how's that number changed over the past two or three years?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what we'll discuss, but I wanted to get some info from you, because we've really looked at that, it's a big part of our budget.
And David, you, I know you were kinda wrapping up on the FTE discussion, but it's, I think we also had some questions on the bond and Capital Reserve.
Yep.
Either legalities or whatever.
Yep.
And then the enterprise funds noted in nutritional services.
Yes, I did, yeah. I did get those.
So, we've allotted ten more minutes to be on budget, so we should move along with the worksheet. So, this is, again, interactive, and what John said earlier was around the, the property yield estimate, and so we, we can go ahead and put that in, based on what we have.
Sure, it goes, this is from the Joint Fiscal Office, not from the State Tax Commissioner now, so, but it's what Brad James at the Department of Education is sending out to everybody, so.
So, this was ten seventeen, eight thirteen now on this, on here.
So, our equalized pupil stays the same, our cost pre-equalized pupil, excuse me, the increase in the Ed Fund is four seventy-three, three sixty-seven, I'm gonna go back to what it was, that doesn't change. So, our equalized pupils, our cost pre-equalized pupil doesn't change either, it's, this is all on the tax rate.
It's all within the yield.
Yeah. So, it goes from, it's, would be, you know, this is all estimate, four point two-one cent tax decrease versus what we had before is five point five-six. It might be easiest to see in this.
Yeah, which I said here.
Where that was two hundred dollars down, and now it's one fifty-two.
Yeah.
So, that is, that does add to the tax rate, and, and I think it affects the, the, no, it doesn't affect the non-residential rate, there was no change in that for our businesses. So, that's the first change, and that's what we're gonna use for year one.
So, can we, John, you know, the Capital Reserve Fund, we kind of, we already did this a little bit on the, on those slides, but if we establish the, you know, if you, this is where you can say up or down, if you wanted to.
So, we're gonna use, I'll just use one fifty.
So, this is if we can put it into contingency.
Yeah, and you just can see, you can see what happens to the, you know, to the.
It's an increase in our budget, budget up to two point four-nine from two point one-six, and it adds a twenty-two dollars on that home, twenty-sixty-six thousand dollar home.
And when Elizabeth and I met with Kevin and Pat, no, or actually, it was at the legislative breakfast, right, and we hear the home value from Tom on a three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar home was going to be a fifty-dollar increase, fifty-dollar increase on the, on the home.
On the city side.
Yeah, and thirty on the condo on the city side.
And so, we're still under the cap.
Yeah.
Change, or it does change, but we're under.
It's to be a net decrease.
So, we can do other interactive changes.
They're getting punchy, I think.
We're getting a little punchy.
So, I, I mean, the, the other things that you, you know, that are at play, obviously, some of the capital projects that are currently in there, you've got the bond in there, you know, or we've got the bond implications that are in there. The bond's currently in there at, in, in the one year, correct, John, for just paying on the principal on the year one?
Just interest.
So, what happens if you put the absolute must things out of the bond into the operating budget? I don't know if you've broken down or, I mean, we've asked you to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've asked you to put the whole thing.
Well, if you put it over three years, if you put eight hundred grand in a year approximately, let's see what that does.
Okay.
So, I'd say that's in lieu of, you know, in addition to the one, one fifty plus six fifty, whatever.
So, you're saying, put it in.
I'm saying if we did this, I don't know that we'd be doing the Capital Reserve.
Take the Capital Reserve out.
It's a net, net of eight hundred or.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
So, that, as far as the current configuration, that still is about even on the tax rate, under a penny decrease.
Well, is that, does that include the double, do you double?
No, we're getting there, we're getting there. Right now, though, we're over, let's see, the allowed maximum.
Right.
By a hundred and fifty dollars, and there's, there's a penalty, I have to calculate, I have, I haven't.
Well, that's the part I was wondering, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll know what that is, not right now, can't do that, but it, it's something we need to see, because the question was versus bond.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be good to know.
Yeah, but that does throw us over by three hundred and sixty-four thousand bucks.
Yeah, we'd get to see that.
So, so our threshold to not go over would be about an incremental half a million?
About, I can, just three sixty-four, I'll just subtract that, and we'll get the right number.
To your point, Martin, of going right to the cap.
Right. Yeah, that gets the cap of one point six-nine.
There you go.
And, yep, no, no penalty.
And did we say that a Capital Reserve Fund is exempt from?
We don't know.
The increase?
It is, but not in this year.
It is, but not in this year.
They have to measure, they have to measure debt service and Capital Reserve Fund from the prior year to calculate it for next year.
All right, so next, it would be a good, okay, thank you.
So, establishing it would be maybe appropriate action in preparation for, for next year, where if you had to, you know, look at ways to have things avoided Act Forty-Six, it could be.
Yeah, if we were gonna try to do anything with the operational money, instead of using the bond, we would do it through the Capital Reserve, because at least it helps us for next year.
Right, and this, this is a good, as far as benchmark goes, it's a two point three cent tax decrease, one point four-three percent, to the taxpayers if we obey the cap, as it is right now.
Right.
We keep to the cap, and it's eighty-four dollar decrease versus the city's fifty increase, so.
Right.
Well, I tell you, we have it good relative to a lot of other communities in the state, if you say that. I mean, there's a lot of people who are having a cut significantly, still going over the cap, and are seeing big tax increases.
That's a big, that's a big, that's the, that's a big factor.
Yeah, absolutely.
Been, been many, many, many communities have way, way down.
So, actually, let's take a look at that, can we change equalized pupils to, let's see.
Isn't that final, isn't that a final number?
That's final.
No, I, I know that is for this year, but just from a fluctuation standpoint.
I got you.
We, we lost twenty-four between sixteen and seventeen, so let's take twenty-four out of that.
Do, do we have any prediction of what the next year will be, or?
Well, see, we have, the pre-K program is, is included as a minor, it's not fifty percent, it's less than fifty percent of an FTE, but that's really helped our equalized pupils, and we've talked about it, Joanne kinda is.
Yeah, it's seeming like it's gonna continue to grow some more, I believe.
That, that's where that categorization would be very helpful, to understand where.
Where the.
The drivers of enrollment, and then where the drivers of staffing are coming.
Wasn't there an addition for assistance in the pre-K?
Yeah.
Yes, par educators.
Yeah, that's one of the ads, and then.
Last year, we added some.
An added staff.
We had, have an outside contract in there, we want us to reduce, because we need to do some of it in-house, actually.
Right, so, why don't you take the.
Take that in?
No, the three thirty-five out, just so we know.
Oh, yeah. So, it's, it'd be at a two point six decrease. The driver on this is, Dan's letters, is less local revenue, the fact that that increased.
All right, if we didn't have that local revenue, and if our equalized pupils, this is the scenario of many, the equalized pupils is a.
Well, what, I'm, I'm trying. Well, what, I'm, I'm trying to interpret what this is saying. This doesn't look like a big impact by losing equalized pupils. So is this all the carryover?
No, no.
Intuition money.
It's, it's the local revenue.
Right.
But it's also this rate, this rate really.
Oh.
Really is, sometimes they only, let me do this, I'll just do $9,600 as an increase, but not very much. That's usually, that's usually where we have trouble when our, we hold our spending to under 3%, for instance. This rate is going up or the, they used to shift the Vermont residential rate, no more. But those two combined are the problem, so, because it's not, because that's high still, it's helping our tax rate.
And here's where the huge uncertainty is, is that we have no idea what the yield, property yield is going to be next year. Because this year they're using $20 million of one-year funds, or at least so far they're considering that, to come up with that yield. All of a sudden, it could be down to $9,600 next year.
So, yeah, that's right. That yield is subsidized this year.
Because it's just going to be a dollar. Unless our, you know, if the, overall, the grand list in the state is increasing, then that yield should stay steady or go up. Shouldn't, I mean, isn't that how that should work?
Sure. I have an idea on this.
No, please.
When you're the legislator, and I'm, I'm not picking on you, but I'll look out here.
Go on, Joe.
No, no, pick on it.
We should be at the state level talking about the 18 impacts. You know, all your discussions should be on fiscal 18. We have 240 districts, people like me.
It's true.
Scrambling around, talking about what is the state cap rather than what should be in our budget. And so I know that's risky, but, and, and we could run a deficit in one year, and that's why it's not done, but boy.
Right.
That, maybe that's too, too simple, but, yeah, that's how I.
Well, speaking of that, and I don't know if the rest of the board feels like this would be of value, but should we take a rough pass at 18? Kind of, I know Dan took a rough pass, and at least so we kind of know what we'll be talking to the taxpayers from a two-year window standpoint and where the sensitivities are. Because if we know that the yield is subsidized this year, so it could go to this rate next year, if we know we might anticipate some fluctuations up or down in enrollment, I, I wonder if it's worthwhile, even though we know accuracy is an issue, but just to get an idea of what a two-year picture would look like.
Oh, I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a good idea.
It's probably good to do as a worst-case scenario, because you could spend all day with different scenarios. If he's, this, this could be a bad scenario. How's our plan compared to that? That might be helpful.
So, so is there somebody at the Agency of Education you can call to see if they have any predictions of what the property yield is going to be next year?
They're trying to figure it out right now.
All right, they're still just trying to figure out this year.
Yeah, they're, they're. They got nothing going on.
No, but I, that was on my list for this weekend. It just never, I didn't get to it because I had a lot of other ones I did, but we could, it'd have to be real dirty, you know, not.
I think that's fine, because if we, if we're in a ballpark of.
We can come back with a, just to do a. And you, you may not like all the assumptions, but we can change the assumptions.
Yeah.
And take a quick pass at it, you know?
That would be great.
Yeah, and there was, there's been talk of, of taking that 20 million, having 10 million apply this year, saving 10 million for next year. I'm curious, I'm not sure what that in fact ends up doing with the property yield.
$10 million was the benchmark for a change of one penny in the Vermont residential rate.
Right.
So I can figure what that would mean to the yield. It's, it's, it's doable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Equalized pupils.
Please do.
You got some directions and appreciate the feedback.
All right, good budget conversation. We'll move on to agenda item 11, announced tuition for FY 2017.
Yep.
Too many papers.
Yeah, I know, and I'm sorry for that. I'll leave this running.
Oh, you have it?
Yep. Actually, did they hand it out, right?
Little different change in perspective.
So you have tuition information of.
With you.
Oh, jeez, did I not give you one? That wasn't.
Oh, you had an extra, okay.
So announced tuition rates.
I'm saying accept a recommendation.
Yep, so you see that it's a slight downward.
I know.
I'm out. And again, it is not an action item. This is information. If there is a lot of desire, I mean, these three particularly, items 11, 12, and 13, you may want to have a separate group if you want to talk about them. This may be a non-issue.
So how do we compare to the competing schools drawing students from the tuitioning schools?
You can't yet because.
You don't know yet?
Not yet done.
Vote.
January 15 deadline.
So I, I feel like in the past we've had some idea of where they are.
Some have been earlier.
What we would know is the allowed tuition that just happened on 15.
Right.
And we, we can know what the announced tuition for 16 is. But it, surveying it would be no use yet because the, they're all doing the same calculations for this, for this group.
This is typically the time where we get a lot of questions, like where are you guys at? Where are you at? So there's the same, similar conversations. We do have a CDS superintendent's meeting next week, Monday, actually this, next week. I don't know which week I'm in. Yeah, next week, so this is usually a conversation that we have, is get a little bit of a dipstick from my New York City County partners.
So how's this being received by Grand Isle and Georgia and?
Sure. The board has to decide first.
So why would we decrease?
We have more students.
Yeah.
And we, our budgets went up 2.16. Somewhere in here, we did the high school, it didn't go, high school and middle school.
Yeah.
The total spending, especially the middle school, didn't go up as much. So kind of moderate expenses with more kids as a denominator is the reason.
But I'm just thinking about, about this in a different way. When you think about all the FTEs we're adding as a result of tuition students.
Right, but you've got to think about the tuition that comes in as well.
Yeah.
And then the support, you know, those supports needed to service.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's a, we could, we could keep the rate the same.
What's the, what's the benefit to decreasing it?
Well, I think there's some level of competitiveness, although those that choose don't often look at what the, what the bill is.
Right.
So our sending districts, though, you know, that send to us are obviously, you know, aware of it. And it may be in part connected to potential partnerships into the future around opportunities to collaborate, right?
I think that last one is particularly important because we have to be seen as really playing fair now because there is, and there is a law there now that these sending districts can designate.
Yeah.
Schools. And we want to play fair with them, so we're always considered as one of the top three schools that they would designate. That's kind of part of it.
We also, Martin had an idea about discounts and that kind of thing. We kicked that around in the office quite a bit, and actually with Deb Beretta. It's just, it's an individual recruitment that Patrick Burke and Deb are doing tonight with Georgia kids. The kids, the tuition barely comes up, you know, it's at that level. Now, I know at the board level, I'm sure it does. I've seen the Georgia board meetings when they get our bill, so I know it does, but.
Is, is there a line-by-line calculation ever, has that ever been done for what it actually costs?
Oh, yeah, there's a state formula for all these.
Yeah, announced tuition rates.
It's consistent among the schools.
If we were way off, I mean, then there would be the, if we were not playing fair, if we were way, you know, charging, somehow trying to charge more, then there may be a risk that we could be excluded.
I understand. Is that, does that include, does that calculation include like that we give a laptop to each kid and that kind of stuff?
Operating costs.
Okay.
All in there.
Plus service, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
We, we were talking 150 kids, 150 kids next year, we anticipate. So out of the 900 that are at high school, 143 are from different districts, from different towns, you know? That's a lot. And you don't, you don't notice it when, we're going on a little bit too much, I'll be quiet. And we're, you don't notice it when you're in, in the building. You don't know where the kids are from. It's just pretty cool.
So that's where we are. It's not, it's a discontinued discussion. It sounds like there's really no action for us at this point. Maybe we'll, I'll give you a little bit more information if information's available. At my superintendent's meeting, but we'll, we'll plan to bring this back for the next meeting.
Definitely has to be acted on next time.
All right, we'll move on to the school board line item program budget.
It's in your packet.
I know the backup was a little weak, and I apologize. We got the detail out in the board questions today. But the two things that are changed between legal and, and the board budget are, we added some professional services in the board budget as a suggestion, if you want to use them. I know there's some Burke and White, other kind of professional services that might be needed. And we always get the question, where's this money coming from? So it's, it's, that's what, that's what the change is there. And over time, it's amazing, the legal fees seem to be, unless we have a big issue, methadone clinic was a kind of aberration, but the total expense for legal is around $105,000, $110, and it switches when there's negotiations. Kind of keeps in that ballpark, so there's a little bit more there, but it's more for negotiations and less in general legal stuff. So that's, that was the thinking there.
So is, does this purchase service line currently reflect the White and Burke? Is that, are they in here?
No, this is next year.
Oh, this is next year.
This is for, this is a, I guess, contingent, but gives you some flexibility.
Okay.
I mean, there's a fair amount of unknowns, too, that come our way, right, and.
That's, I mean, is that a 30% increase?
It is because of that one line.
That seems a lot. I mean, it's not a big dollar amount, but.
Yeah, your budget has been, it's not, not very big.
We have talked about needing.
Is this the year anyone wants to vote a raise in?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Just thought I'd ask. All right, so you don't need action on this?
No, just any direction that you might want. I mean, if there is some.
Rather than give it to you the last day.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to school choice capacity.
That's also in your packet. This is also an annual action that's needed, not for tonight.
And I think the recommendation was one.
Correct.
Any questions or comments? All right. We do have to take action on that next time, is that right?
Yeah.
All right, move on to 14, set the agenda for the January, actually, do you need the 13th?
Yeah, we need to do 13.
So we'll set the 13th first. Should we hold on the 20th, or was that just the wrong date?
It's in here too, Elizabeth, the 20th. So we needed to add the bond language, ballot language, and annual warning. At least we need to get that going. We had the solar array coming back. And we have those, well, they're already on there, so. Anything I'm missing, John?
No, no.
It's the, it's the capital reserve, the ballot for the operating budget and the bond.
And so are they going to need to take action on the 13th, or can they do that on the 20th? Do you know? I, I forgot.
My knowledge from the city clerk was 19th, so I think the 13th would have to be.
That's right. So we have, so you, we have some work to do.
This is supposed to be a budget meeting. You're not supposed to sneak other stuff on here. Because this is an extra.
I'm not seeing, do we have the 13th agenda? I just have the 20th here.
Should be in your packet.
We do, okay, it's probably just mixed up.
That's not where it's going to be placed, but.
Oh, you're adding that on the 13th?
Well, we want to do it on the 20th. The solar array needs to be done on the 20th, or 13th, right?
I think so. If we're not going to do it, then, if we're not going to do it, then, I don't know.
Well, we don't know if we're not going to do it.
I know.
We're having executive session on the 13th?
Yep. Well, your choice.
Sure.
Sure?
It's on there, it's worn. We have enough, we've seemed to have enough other things that.
Okay.
We have things that we need to continue to pay attention to.
So the only, the only item that's not budget-related right now is really the solar array.
Mm-hmm.
If everything is all tied to the budget, yeah.
Some of this is contingent about us getting, you know, work done, right, including the solar array.
Right.
Case.
Well, just to make that clean from a public participation standpoint, can, how would the board feel about if we get the contractual questions answered, that we might do a quorum of the board by phone to, just to prove the solar array? Would that?
And take that off, and be able to take it off this.
Yeah. Would that make sense to try to do that?
Well, if we get the questions answered, we'll either, we'll go one way or another, right?
Right.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to say that we'll have a phone meeting to approve it because.
I think it's going to require discussion, though.
Yeah, it may. I think it may, yeah.
Well, do we want to keep that option?
Yeah.
Should we just keep that option open and maybe do that telephonically with a quorum of the board? And that might serve the city's interests as well, although we only have a week here.
And as soon as we're going to give that answer, it's Monday, we think?
We.
So we'll talk about doing that Monday or Tuesday, and somebody will be on Wednesday.
Well, good point. I guess I was thinking that could be answered more quickly.
You're just trying to keep this.
I thought, I heard it was going to be Monday.
Yeah, I think Monday, well, yes, Monday, because tomorrow to set it up and then Friday to have business managers.
And you would have warned the meeting anyway, so, okay, well, I guess we're back, keeping, keeping it on.
Okay, so that's, that's the, that's the 13th. And I'll, I'll hone in a little bit more on the executive session.
Okay. So do we want to review the 20th as well? Now or wait?
Well, I think you can, we can do that on the, we can do that on the 13th. You have it in your packet. I think you're fine. I don't think you need to dig on that one right now.
Okay.
I do think, you know, budget communication planning is part of that 20th. Be great for people just to be thinking about what different you want to do, if anything, given.
Okay. Future agenda items? Anything that needs to be moved? Changed, added? All right, seeing nothing, we'll move on to the minutes of the December 16th meeting. Any comments, changes? All right, seeing none, those are approved by consensus. Any questions on AP orders number 24 that have not been addressed? All right, we'll take a minute for board self-evaluation.
Do you have any extras so we can?
Yep. There should be one here. Maybe I didn't get one, right?
John has a question.
Meg, Meg brings up some great points sometimes. If we don't look at the 20. No, I mean, oh, sorry. On the 20th, if we don't review this now, review it to 13th.
Oh, we're already in mourning, notice.
Meg and Delina and David and I will have to get everything out the next day. So it'll...
Oh, the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, the problem is we're week after week, that's the issue for warning.
All right, so we'll, we'll complete our self-evaluation, then we'll go back and review the agenda for the 20th.
Is it in the packet, the agenda for the 20th?
Yeah.
Okay. Can't even move. Okay, while Martin tabulates... Yeah, hold on, yeah. While Martin tabulates those, why don't we look at the agenda for the 20th? Yes, Julie, you have a question?
The administrative reports, we can take off schools out. That one won't be ready. We'll check on boosters, I'm conscious of...
Are we getting any of them?
Yep.
Can we just read them?
Yeah, some are read, some should be standard front.
Nutrition service will definitely be ready, it's ready now.
All right.
Nutrition, schools out, though.
Not. Special ad, of course, you had that, so Joanne's actually ready to do that. As far as alumni booster, I think we'll kind of bracket for time. I think we, these have, some of these have been pulled over from previous ones, so... Other than that, I think we're fine.
Okay, so we're all set on the 20th?
Yep.
Okay. Martin? Do you have a report out?
It's got our doctors. I suggested disagree, but the check mark isn't agree, but I'm pretty sure you meant disagree.
Okay.
So everybody disagreed that the, that the board members arrived on time. Oh, wait, no, you agreed.
I agreed, yeah.
You agreed that they arrived on time, not realizing that I had arrived 25 minutes late for the executive session because I was neglecting to...
She probably thought it said...
It did make it quicker.
All right.
Oh, man.
It's not even that late.
So, and of course, one audience member disagreed about agenda items being prioritized and moved from the parking lot. And we can guess which audience member that would have been.
Stuart.
Given that, that was a constant refrain when that audience member was on the board.
I think you're being singled out, Mrs. Buggby.
All right, so the other thing, let's see, wait a second. All right, so on the superintendent feedback, here's where we have all this, oh, disagree. Everybody disagrees about, about data reports provided in advance of the meeting in support of deliberations. I think this is a disagree over board questions were first anticipated and second responded to in a thorough, timely manner. I actually got a couple of disagrees on that one. And also a disagree as far as the board was informed in a timely manner of any significant incidental information. That's only if you, and I think I deemed that significant information about the meeting between Shumlin and a couple of our self-reliant students, which we should have probably announced today, too, during the announcements.
That's the latter, yeah.
Yeah. All right, I think I was there. You probably need to get somebody else to do this job, because I was really pathetic.
At some point, we probably need to reevaluate, are we, are we actually improving on the feedback we're providing our own meetings?
Yeah, we do need to do that, yeah.
We can save that for a working session. All right, any other comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
We are adjourned.